Hi, welcome to the December Village of Buchanan Board Meeting. In case of emergency, please use the exit door to your right. Or there's a staircase behind the elevator. Please do not use the elevator in case of emergency. And I'd like to say this evening after the pledge, we're going to have a moment of silence for our former, for Salvaticleieri, who was our former zoning board chairman and also, also a zoning board member who passed just a few weeks ago. All right? If you could please join me in the pledge, and I'd like our new police officer, David, to lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
[Inaudible]
Yes, I'm sorry.
Good to remain standing for a moment of silence.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Chief, if you could please introduce our new police officer, and also if you could also swear him in today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I thank you for this opportunity, and would like to introduce to you Officer David Regg, who has joined the Police Department with your approval last month. Officer Regg has close to five years of experience in law enforcement. He's a graduate of Dutch Community College, comes to us from the town of Poughkeepsie, and we're very happy and excited to have him here, and look forward to working together with him and getting him to acclimate himself to the village here and meet as many residents as he can. So, without further ado, I'll swear him in. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. Please state your name.
Aye, David Regg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of police officer for the Village of Buchanan.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties of position of police officer with the Village of Buchanan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to say, I'm very, I'm very proud of being a Village of Buchanan police officer. I can't wait to meet all the residents, or at least a lot of the residents here that live and reside in the Village of Buchanan, and I can't wait to make this a better place to live and have a business and work in the Village of Buchanan. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Thank you. And welcome to the Village of Buchanan. And you are going to find out very quickly, it's a very, it's a very great community, a lot of nice people, so I think you're going to enjoy your time here.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Do you want to introduce some? We have a guest here this evening, and before we get to comments from the floor, I'm going to have Nick Zachary introduce our guest.
Well, I'm introducing Wendy Andringa, but she's actually here to introduce herself, so I won't get, go on too much about it. But I will say that we did, I did have the fort, a good fortune of meeting Wendy, who is a landscape architect and deals a lot with industrial reuse of properties. And I quickly realized that her depth of knowledge was much broader than mine, and I've been able to, on the phone or email, to, you know, to try to get a little more understanding on certain things, talking to Wendy, so I'm just going to let Wendy come up and introduce herself.
Thank you. Hello. Hello, everybody. Thank you for inviting me here. It's an honor to be able to meet you and to introduce myself. So, I come from New York City. I am a landscape architect, and many of you might be wondering, what is a landscape architect doing, and why is she interested in our village? And I'll just say that we actually have something in common, in that I also grew up in communities that were economically and physically powered by nuclear plants. So, I grew up in Hanford, in Richland, Washington, and also, my father worked at the plant there. And I also lived in Aiken, South Carolina, where he worked at the Savannah River Plant. And so, in the 1980s, when the plant in Hanford was shut down, political, political administration shift, it sent our community into a tailspin. There were massive layoffs, and people were looking all, you know, moving all around the country, looking for new work. So, this is something that really impacted me. Then, after I left Hanford, I continued to go back and visit friends, and I saw how the loss of the industry and also all of the, you know, the residual waste left behind to the cleanup was also impacting the community in a very difficult way. So, I continued to do, because it's part of my, also, I'm just interested in landscape in general, so because it's a part of my profession, I continued to do research on Hanford. And so, over many years, my research has galvanized my concerns that we have a growing problem with, with communities that are stuck with stranded nuclear waste around the country in our waterways and wetlands. So, I'm pedaling forward in time. I am looking, I am now interested in taking the long view of this situation that we have nationally, because as I see it, I have not been able to find yet proof that there is a national plan to, to accommodate communities that are left with stranded waste. There are some bits, and, you know, some different pockets of proposed legislation around, but I haven't seen any kind of formal strategic plan for this. So, that is what I'm basically interested in, and that's what I'm looking at. So, I'm coming with you to share my story, to tell you that I, as a, you know, as a professional who is interested in landscapes and has this research interest, would, am offering my help in any way that I can, if, if you see, I know that, you know, the economic recovery from the loss of energy is a foremost concern right now, but if there's my profession, my, my skills are in community design and planning, so if there is any way I could be of use in, with those services, I am offering myself. So, that's, that's what I came to say. And I hope we can continue this conversation. I'm happy to talk more in depth about the things that I've learned through my research, but right now, I just wanted to introduce myself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for coming. You have an interesting background.
Do you mind if I just add one thing? One of the things that most impressed me was how Wendy is exploring this whole area and getting to know the whole area, the communities, not just, not just what's going on on Broadway, where the plant is, but, but the whole area. And I, you know, and I was a little surprised at how much she immersed herself in that, and she said, really, you know, that what she does professionally requires, you know, a good understanding of the community, not just, you can't take an isolated fact, it's sort of a big picture thing, and I was very impressed with that. Thanks for coming, Wendy.
Can I just get your last name again?
Yes, A-N-D-R-I-N-G-A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we're going to bore Wendy for two hours, or an hour and a half.
Or 20 minutes.
Or 20 minutes.
Depending on Nick.
Yes, yes.
Our meetings are scintillating, Nick. You know that. Comments from the floor, agenda items only. No comments. Okay. So, under new business, resolution A, engaging the services of KW Bond LLC. And Nick, since you are all warmed up, I will have you read the first, oh, hold on, the first resolution, please.
Sure. All right. And we're going to preface this by saying that this is a proposal to hire a bond specialist whose last name is Bond. So, if you hear me saying Bond a lot, and you're getting, what, 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 it's because the Bond specialist's name is Bond. All right. So, Village of Buchanan, resolution engaging the services of KW Bond LLC. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan has determined it is in the public interest to construct and acquire a new sewer pump station. Whereas the Board has determined that the cost of the project should be paid through borrowing under the powers granted the village in the local finance law and the state constitution. And whereas the Board recognizes the need to engage public finance professionals to assist the village in authorizing and issuing debt pursuant to the village's borrowing powers to pay the cost of the project. And whereas KW Bond LLC has submitted an engagement letter dated November 14th, 2019, to serve as special public finance counsel with respect to financing the project, which engagement letter has been reviewed by the village attorney and the interim village administrator and found to be suitable for the assistance required. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan as follows. One, KW Bond LLC is authorized to serve as special public finance counsel for the village in connection with the authorization of the financing of the project. And two, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by a majority of the members of the Board.
Okay. This is in reference to a bond we, we have to take for a major pair, repair of the Fourth Street Sewer Pumping Station that's in dire need of being repaired. So, we will, this is part of the process. We will be looking to get a bond to do that. It's over $800,000 to fix that. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Rich, if you could do the next, please. Resolution authorizing a declaration of official intent, but you know what? This is, this is a real lengthy one. So, Marcus, could you just do an overview of this?
Sure. As we discussed at the last work session, what this will allow us to do is allow us to, to take a look back of the expenses for the pump station, this relating back to the pump station that we just discussed, to allow us to do a look back and recoup the costs, the soft costs up to this point. So, this is allowed on the IRS regulations, to allow us to go back 18 months, and then allow us to borrow that money and recoup the, refinance that information through the bond whenever we take it out.
All right. Thank you. Because it was a lengthy resolution, so I figured you could, you could summarize it. All right. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I apologize if anyone missed last month's meeting. The gentleman sitting in the seat, the hot seat now, is Marcus Serrano, and he is our interim village administrator, and we're hoping that he becomes more than an interim. So, Marcus brings a lot of financial and a lot of experience in municipal, from different municipalities, so we are very lucky to have him.
Can we zoom in there and get a headshot, please?
Oh, God.
He's kidding.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Dwayne, if you could do the next resolution, resolution C, awarding pavilion roof repair.
Village of Buchanan, resolution awarding pavilion roof repair. Whereas the village board of trustees have received proposals to repair the pavilion roof in the Village of Buchanan. And whereas said request for proposals was properly advertised and bids were received and publicly read aloud on November 19th, 2019, at 2:00 PM. And whereas said bidders have been reviewed by the village clerk, village engineer, and the village clerk and village engineer have determined that the lowest responsible bidder and received the low bid, low bidder's work references. Now therefore be resolved that the bid is timely and awarded to Avlon Industries of Clinton Corners, New York, and subject to the review or approval of the contract and the association bonds and insurance by the village engineer and village attorney. And the bid amount was $57,617.
And the other, the other bid, there were two bids on this, was?
$138,800.
Okay, good. Thank you. This is, we had, just as a review, we had gotten a grant for $125,000 to do the pavilion, some repairs on the pavilion. So, this is one phase of it, and we're awarding the bid to this, this company, so we can get started on that. Well, hopefully, the weather cooperates with us, but, on a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a question?
One question. The, the grant being for more than this portion of the work, is there a timetable within which we need to, what is the timetable for using the rest of that grant money?
There's no, right now, there's no timetable. They actually want the finished grant application to be in this week. So, I got this, plus the other stuff we discussed, some steel beams.
We discussed some stuff at the workshop, yeah.
And some electrical work. So, all that's going to be incorporated in the grant, that's going to be a lot tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thought I was going to lose track, huh, Nick? He likes to ask questions, and I'm like, where are we? Okay. Trustee Funchen, if you could do resolution appointing, oh, resolution sharing assessment services with the town of Cortland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas Thomas Watkins is the assessor for the town of Cortland, and whereas both the Village of Buchanan and town of Cortland have interest in engaging in a shared services pro agreement for the use of Thomas Watkins' assessment expertise. And whereas by agreement, Mr. Watkins would sign the Village of Buchanan assessment role and will provide guidance to the Village of Buchanan staff, including with respect to valuation, exemption, maintenance, grievance, and SCAR petitions to the Village of Buchanan. And whereas Mr. Watkins' work with the Village of Buchanan is estimated to be between 52 and 104 hours per year. And whereas the town of Cortland's controller's office would be tasked with overseeing Mr. Watkins' compensation, and the Village of Buchanan would reimburse the town on a monthly basis for Mr. Watkins' work for the village at 150% of his base rate. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Buchanan agrees to reimburse the town of Cortland as described above for the services of Mr. Watkins.
All right. Thank you, Rich. We were in need of an assessor, and we're going to use Mr. the town's assessor, his services. And also, just, just so everyone knows, this is not something new. This is, the Village of Croton also uses Mr. Watkins, too. So, we just felt it was necessary for our assessment role to do this. Marcus, did you want to add anything else on that? Okay. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution appointing planning board member. Whereas there has been a vacant position on the planning board, making it necessary to point a new planning board member to complete the unexpired term. And whereas it is the responsibility of the mayor to appoint, appoint a replacement for the aforementioned position. Now be it therefore resolved that the mayor hereby appoints Jeffrey Fiala to the position of planning board member effective December 3rd, to fill the unexpired term of Mike Scott ending on April 4th, 2004. So, there's no, no vote necessary on this. It's a mayor's appointment. So, congratulations, Jeff, and thank you for, for joining our planning board. So, information from officers and departments. Justice Court report, October 2019. I always like to read the, the sums. 3,113 on one report. Oh, I don't have the other report. Okay, 3,113. I'm sorry. I don't know where that went. Thank you, Nick. And the other is $4,874. All right. Thank you.
You want to tell them?
No, I'm good. Police reports received for October 2019, received and filed. Attorney's reports. Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do have one matter for a quick executive session.
Okay.
I have nothing for public session.
Okay.
Wait, correct.
Mayor's report. On December 17th, our workshop, I would like to have that televised, if that's okay with the Board. We have Norma Drummond from the County Planning Department coming in to talk about, yeah, we changed, we changed our, because otherwise, it was December 24th, so I didn't know how many people I'd get here on December 24th for our planning board, not our planning board, but for our workshop.
Not many.
Not many. Yeah, I probably sit here by myself. Marcus and I, we'll sit by ourselves. So, we changed it to December 17th, but Norma Drummond wants to come in to talk about the census, the 2020 census. And also, we're going to have a short presentation from Sustainable Westchester. And so, we will be televised for our workshops, for that workshop. Normally, we don't televise workshops, but there's a lot of important information that needs to, to be out there. The other thing is, I just want to mention, on Thursday this week, our attorney, Stephanie Portius, Marcus, and myself will be taking a road trip to Vermont, Yankee, Vermont. Yankee, Vermont is one of the power plants that have closed and is in the process of decommissioning. I have gone there before, so I'm going to see what the updates are and what's going on, and also to talk to some people in the community that are involved in the decommissioning process. And, you know, what better way to learn from experience, you know? So, it's always a good meeting when we meet with those people. And also, at 6 o'clock that night, they have their citizens advisory panel, so we'll be going to that also, to see how, you know, how their panel works and how things, how they're progressing. So, it's going to be a long day, but it's, it's going to be very interesting also. The only other thing I'd like to say, oh, and the other thing I'd like to say, as everyone has seen out at the Circle, our, our cement work has been done.
Looks great.
It's been repaired. They did a great job, and, you know, so, we're happy that that's done and that's behind us. So, but what I'd like to do is wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy and Healthy New Years, and Happy Kwanzaa, whatever, whatever you celebrate. I hope you have a, a happy, happy festival. And I, I just hope that in the world, that we can find some peace, and we can find some peace in our country next year. So, that's my greatest hope. Maybe some peace in the village, too. What do you think? Yeah, next year is going to be, it's going to be our first, the first phase of the close down of Indian Point, too. That will happen, it's still unscheduled to close, in the end of April of 2020. So, next year's budget will be quite a challenge, but we're already working on a lot of different things, so the budget process will be quite different from other processes we've done before. So, but we've got a good team here, and we'll work through things. Nick?
Yeah.
What do we have for?
Teresa, we probably should announce also about the, the lighting of the Christmas tree, which is Sunday, December 8th, at 6:00 PM at the Circle. And, and then there's a get-together here at the Village Hall afterwards, right?
Yeah.
There's really good hot chocolate here. Right, Eileen?
Yeah.
The hot chocolate maker.
Is it spiked?
No.
Thank you. So, a couple of things. First, there was a piece of mail that I got, I threw it away, got another one, and I'm a little, I was a little concerned about it, so I looked it up, and it's a, I'm assuming a lot of people got this. It's, it's from, it's a, promoting a website called Nextdoor.com, and apparently, it's a website that, it's nationwide, and they set up in localities, and then people in localities can post things and share information. You know, they, one of the things they seem to be geared towards is, you know, warning about police events or any crime, but also, you know, things, safety updates, as they say, lost pet notifications. It seemed a little weird, never heard of it, looked it up. There are a lot of complaints on the Better Business Bureau website. The, the chief violations include invasion of privacy. Once you join up, they will somehow, without you even authorizing it, they've been, they've gotten hold of people's address books and then start, and then start emailing everybody and their contacts. So, I would not, at this point, I mean, I, I don't have the definitive report on this website, but it sounds to me like it would be something to avoid right now. If at some point in the future I find out there's actually some credible use to this site, I'll, I'll try to report that again. But right now, if you get this mailing from Nextdoor.com, I would, I would avoid it. And don't, don't sign in, don't log on, even if you don't give personal info. Also, they were controlling content. A lot of the reports said people were being dropped from the website because they didn't like the content of what people posted. So, there's a lot of issues, and I would stick away from it.
So, what can we do as a village? You know, is there any suggestions, what we can do as a village, other than just tell people not to really get involved in it?
Well, should we, should we put it in our newsletter, a little announcement about? I mean, I don't know. I, I, I don't know if we-
What are your thoughts? Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if this is a credible organization that could then come back to us with a legal issue, but it would seem that at least right now, announcing it to the, how many people watch this? Couple hundred, maybe?
A hundred thousand.
A hundred?
Yeah.
Fifty?
Twenty.
Those of you out there, tell your neighbors and friends, stick away from Nextdoor.com.
[Inaudible]
That would be good. And, you know, and seniors-
They did mention that.
Oh, that's good. They did, at the sen- oh, excellent.
I think so.
Okay.
A month or so.
Okay. But, you know, seniors don't use the internet as mu- I, you know, I know there are some people that are very internet savvy, but, but a lot of seniors do not use the internet as much as a lot of younger people. By younger, I just mean, not just teens, but 30s, 40s, 50s, anybody that's not in the senior club. You know, a lot of people are internet savvy and might say, hmm, that's, let me see what's on there, let me sign up. You know, so, so I'm glad it went out to there, but it's one to watch for. You know, the, the village in general is concerned with the people's privacy. At the last workshop, we discussed a vendor that wanted to go door-to-door selling a certain service, and the Board pretty much anonymously agreed that unanimously, not anonymously, agreed that, that we don't need people going door-to-door, especially since they wanted the right to do that until night at night. The last thing people want to hear is knocking on their door when it's dark, especially if you're somebody that lives alone or an older person. So, you know, and we deny that person a vending permit, and that's just, you know, we try to respect people's privacy in their homes. And, you know, when somebody's trying to sell you something, chances are you've gotten stuff in the mail, calls that you don't want, fly, you know, I mean, there's so many ways that people approach, that, that, you know, approach customers, consumers for sales, that I don't think we needed that. And the Board all agreed on that. I, I want to thank the beautification committee that was here at the last workshop. They do a lot of nice stuff around the village, and now they came in at the last workshop, which was not televised, that, and they pitched their idea to hold an Earth Day celebration as a park cleanup day. It seems to be the main thrust of it. They're going to organize that, come back with some details, and there'll be further news on that. That's not until April 18th, but I wanted to thank them for their efforts. And a last thing, I just wanted to mention that I guess it's going to be coming through soon, that single-use plastic bags are going to be banned in New York State. Little inconvenience, but probably well worth it. Some people estimate that by 2050, there'll be more plastic in the ocean than fish. So, whatever little things we can do, like I always say, the individual raindrop never considers itself responsible for the flood. So, all you can do is be a raindrop, do your little bit, buy your eggs in cardboard instead of plastic, use reusable bags at the supermarket, fill that Poland Spring bottle over again from your fridge, fridge filter, instead of opening up another bottle every time you need it, or use a stainless steel bottle. Lots of little things we can all do to cut down our plastic use. We're going to be drowning in it, and we have to leave this planet to our children and grandchildren. And as Dwayne would like to remind you, and especially keep those pieces of plastic out of the storm drains.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Nick. Dwayne, what do you have? No, let's, let's go down this way. Rich, you're next.
Thank you, Mary. You're welcome. I just want to remind people about the December seventh Pearl Harbor Memorial down in the village of Croton this year on Saturday. I think it's at twelve noon, is it? Twelve noon?
Was it one, that one?
One o'clock? Okay.
Thank you.
Even though it's a long, long time ago, it's a, it is something to think about that we would never have a Pearl Harbor in, in my lifetime, but we did, if you consider September eleventh, it was another nine eleven. I mean, and September eleventh was like Pearl Harbor, but very unlike it in the sense that people pretty much knew fairly, fairly soon what the conditions of the place were and, and who had made it and who didn't. Whereas in Pearl Harbor, you think back then, there are some families that didn't know whether their, their family member had lived or died for two or three weeks. So it's always good to keep in mind about Pearl Harbor.
The day of infamy.
Day of infamy, correct, yes. Nick already mentioned the Christmas tree lighting. I think it's nice to get out there and, and see everybody and it's not supposed to be too coldish at this time around, so it should be a nice evening. I'd just like to mention about Sal Bautagliere. He was a, I met him going around when we were first, going door to door, running for office. And him and his wife, Millie, were so kind. And he was always there to give you advice, 'cause he had been around for so long. And on the boards that we were on, the zoning board, he was very good to help people out. So he will be missed and genuinely, my sympathy goes out to Millie. Around this time of year, I always remind people about the Christmas lights. You've probably seen on the television a tree exploding in flames because you didn't water the tree. Well, I understand that is one of the reasons for exploding in flames. But also, from my past job, I know that most of the lights, when you see the UL on them, they're all counterfeit 'cause they're coming from China. They're not, I would never leave my house with my Christmas tree lights on. That's all I would advise people. Turn them off, you can turn them on back when you come back in the house. We, we enter the Christmas season and it's a season that we had to count our blessings. And from, from my perspective here in Buchanan, I think we've been very blessed in the fact that we have, we have really hit a home run with our police chief, Eric, and now Marcus over here, which I hope you will be able to continue. I mean, we not only got replacements, but we got really great people to work here. And your knowledge and your experience, Eric, and the way you've handled everything here so far, we are truly blessed in Buchanan having both of you. And I thank you. So I just want to wish a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all and make next year be better than this one, the year after be better than that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Very nice, Rich. And is that, is that an old Irish proverb?
No, that's not, I can't claim that. I can't claim that one.
All right, just checking. Thank you. Dwayne, what do you have for us tonight?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to echo what Rich has said. I just, I would just like to echo what Rich has said about, actually, our, our two additions to our community here, the chief and Marcus. They both bring a wealth of experience to their jobs and the professionalism is outstanding. And as I told both of them, timing is everything. And there is the right time and the right place to go forward. So definitely appreciate it. And our latest police officer, which partly because, you know, some of you may ask, well, why do we have a new police officer? Well, first of all, we want the staff to be fully manned and then it cuts down on the wear and tear of our officers already on the job. The rotation is a little bit easier and, you know, we're fully staffed, right, Chief?
That's right.
Okay. So it's a, it's a good thing and Chief has made a great decision in bringing him on. And I look forward to seeing him in the community and outreach into all the citizens. Also, Rich talked about the Pearl Harbor Day. And both my parents were service people. My mother was a WAC. For those who don't know, that's Women's Army Corps. And my dad was in the Navy. And, you know, all the things that came with the Greatest Generation to fight for our freedom, but also so many things that went into effect after World War II. Being a veteran myself, using my G.I. Bill to go and get a Bachelor of Arts degree from Boston University was something that I probably never would have done or could have done without the G.I. Bill. For those politicians that were in office at that time, to have them have the foresight for the G.I. Bill, for Social Security, is a great thing. And I think we can all agree that everything has its ups and downs, but I think at its formation, it was a great social program and an experiment at the time of its inception. Also, as Rich mentioned, the Croton Experience at one o'clock on Saturday. Last year, we hosted it here and I believe it was the mayor who said that the rate of we're losing our World War II veterans, my neighbor, God rest his soul, George Paul, who left us over more than a year ago, was part of that generation. Also, I am going to be part of a special program at twelve noon in Peekskill at the junior high school. It's the, to talk about Pearl Harbor, but more importantly, to talk about someone that probably most people have never heard of. And the gentleman's name was Dorian Miller. And if you've seen any of the two Pearl Harbor movies that have been out over the last couple of years, there was a, a mess cook. And that mess cook was a black man. And he came up on deck during the attack. Having no experience with firing a machine gun, he grabbed the machine gun off the deck and fired it at the Japanese planes while under attack. He also took his captain, who was bootleggy wounded, with a couple of other sailors to safety and was awarded the Navy Cross, which was the first time a black American received the Navy Cross. So part of his story is our shared history. And there's a special effort underway to get him the Congressional Medal of Honor, which is a, a great storyline. So those who don't remember are doomed to repeat it. And as I say so much, freedom has never been free, ever. And that's in our American DNA. So have a great holiday. And although we'll see you back here on the seventeenth, just in case. Have a great holiday. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dwayne. And I forgot to mention earlier that Trustee Pasquale was, is not with us this evening. He is ill. So in case you're wondering what the empty seat was, that's what it is. Okay, comments from the floor? Any comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Reed Outhouse, two forty-one Westchester. I'll second and third the welcome of our new village manager, Mr. Serrano. Everybody looks forward to working with you. I haven't spoken in a while, so Chief Johansson and our new officer. Great to have all these people on board. With the coming impending closure of the plant, one of the things I was looking at was, or just thinking about, was planning and zoning for, for our future because we bet, we bet the farm on that place and the farm is disappearing. Went on the village website to see what's been going on in planning and zoning. And it takes me to two thousand and nine. So the only minutes available for planning and zoning board on the website right now are from two thousand and nine. So I'd like to just ask if we can, seeing what's coming in the future, if we can get, I know that we need to go back to two thousand and nine, but maybe go back a year, two, three years, something, and see if we can get at least a minute scanned in, just so we know what's been coming before the boards and what they've been involved in. I know it's not a lot. I know a lot of it's, you know, little variances and stuff like that, but it's good to have. The other thing is, I think we should also build into the budget or think about it, the money that maybe are already in there, as we move forward and closer to that land being, that the plant being decommissioned, is, I assume, once that starts happening, there's gonna be stuff becoming before the planning and zoning boards as to what's going on over there. They're probably gonna be applying for stuff. You know, I know the nuclear section, that's their thing. But once we start doing stuff with buildings, the village is gonna be, I assume, heavily involved in that. So I'd also like to see us start thinking now about televising those meetings so we could all be current and on board. Minutes are nice, but they're not word for word transcriptions of what's going on. You know, the minutes in me just kind of gives a general thing. If we have the full minutes, that's even better, but it's nice to have a, a video too, if we can. I understand it's a cost. I remember, it was a long time ago, I remember it coming up about taping the board and at the time, they said it was a money issue. But I think as we look at having to develop different parcels in the village, it'd be nice if everybody was able to see that, be a little more transparent. So if we can do that, that would be great.
Thanks, Reed. Yeah, I, I'd like to see more people coming, especially to the planning and zoning board meetings. And there's gonna be an uptick. There's gonna be a definite uptick once things start happening.
And on that note, we should also, I don't know how it would, it would happen, but there are some undeveloped parcels in the village. There's some commercials, some big, you know, big one up by the, the hardware store. There's one across the street, which I know has been kind of floating through in and out of the process. But we should look at those parcels, the church property across the street.
That's been sold.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we could, you know, we, we had the parcel up on Blakely and, and Broadway, turned into major debacle, all the, the, everybody going. If we could maybe get a little ahead of these things and maybe go out and look for people or look for people, companies or businesses to develop these properties and it's something that maybe we want, rather than have them come in here and fight for two years or whatever and we shoot it down, something that'll benefit the tax base.
Did I just hear you volunteer to start a business commission?
Nope. Not at all. But, you know, I think we?
He's gonna be very busy next year at the Citizens Advisory Panel. He's, he is one of my members, so he's gonna be very busy.
Reed, by the way, just as of now, there will be things on planning and zoning, but at, up to this point, I would say there's probably been more discussion at the board workshops than at the, I don't think there's too many things that are coming up in zoning and planning that impact some of these Entergy properties and ConEd properties.
Well, they're not ours and they're not available.
Right, well, but nevertheless, for somebody, but other properties that you, like you just mentioned, people are looking at our pitching proposals for some of them. I also, I have pitched a few different zoning changes. One geared at redevelopment on the nine A corridor, one geared at the, the wooded parcel on the north end of Entergy, and another one that has more to do with the older homes on substandard lots in the village. And, and they're difficult. There's questions, there's legalities. So what happens is, we get busy and suddenly we haven't talked about it for two, three months. But with the board's, if the board is okay with it, I'd like to bring these back into discussion and see if we, you know, I don't, I just, I don't, you know, we've done it too often, just let things die in the water. So I would like to bring those up.
It's not like we're not, there's not things being addressed.
I'm understanding.
I just wanted to, just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I understand that they're difficult issues and we've got other things at hand. So I understand why they get put off. There's just so many things we could do at once.
So I know you had mentioned maybe an extra meeting next year, each month?
Yep. So if, if, at the next workshop, if I could just, and Marcus, I'd like to, you know, just to show him the three zoning changes I was pitching and, you know, get his input. And I, but I'd like to at least keep the conversation alive, even if we have to tweak it so much that it's no longer, looks like what I initially proposed. It's not, it's not a personal agenda for me. It's just trying to get the conversation going and I appreciate that you're mentioning this stuff.
Again, falling in the same thing, like you bring up a good point. I've been to a couple of workshops over the years, I've probably been to, to a bunch, but a lot, a lot of pertinent information gets discussed in those workshops that, that doesn't make it here.
Absolutely.
Another consideration would be to televise those. Again, I, I understand everything comes in additional cost, but at the cost of what, you know, people being more involved and seeing what's going on.
That is where a lot of stuff gets discussed. You know, we had four or five resolutions tonight that we discussed at the last workshop.
Right. And I know surrounding, surrounding communities do televise their, you know, some of them call them committees of the whole, they're all different, but they have the department heads come in. That's all in front of you, that's important stuff. I think there's a lot of stuff that probably goes on that people don't even know about at those meetings as well. So that's, that's something to think about.
You know, there's something we could do, 'cause I know in different communities, they, they would have that meeting before and then, then they would go into their full meeting, so it would be, you know?
Yeah, and then you would be, you'd probably save, obviously, you would probably save on charges of, of?
It's three hundred dollars to tape a meeting.
So if you had, if you had it the same night, you know, you wouldn't have to have somebody come back at a different night and spread out the resources like that. But just, just some suggestions, just looking at the way things are, I think it would help, especially going forward.
No, I do want to mention two things. We did, at the last workshop, we had a company come in that was, it's, it's kind of, it has, it has to be worked out between the town and the village and we have not, not given a, a complete okay on it. We just, we were interested in exploring it more. But we're one of the only places on the Hudson River for a windmill company to come in.
Oh, yeah, I'd heard about that.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, we're not putting windmills on the property. That's not the case, but it would manufacture them so that they could be sent down to Long Island Shore and things like that.
Usually, the people who want the windmills, they don't want them in their community.
Of course not, yeah, of course not.
So that's usually the way that goes, we all know that.
And then the other thing is, across from Entergy, we did have someone come in to discuss the development of that property for high-end housing. So it's just, just a discussion, you know, so.
All right, thanks. If you could just take those suggestions, I appreciate it.
Sure, definitely. No, thank you. Thank you for those comments.
May I make a comment on that?
Sure, absolutely.
We talk about the meetings. I was just thinking, instead of having an extra meeting that we start earlier than, than seven thirty, I don't know how people would feel about it, but?
I'm good with that.
I'm nuts about it. I'm in the city all day sometimes. I need to, you know, I'd like to not have to come from the city right here. I mean, seven, seven, yes, six? Not nuts about that?
No, six thirty seems to be a happy medium.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of that.
I prefer the extremes to the happy mediums.
All right, well, we could talk about that at the next workshop. Well, hi, Diane.
Hi, Diane Tangen, two forty Catherine Street. I know the biggest concern is the closing of Indian Point, but my biggest concern is what's gonna happen to the waste. That's the most important. There's nothing more important, as far as I'm concerned, than, as Wendy, is it right that I call you Wendy? Who said, I think you're the one who said, we don't even have yet, there's no federal depository that we know about that's definite. And what is happening is it, is it that Holtech, are, are they building now the casks as last time?
Holtech, Holtech, there's two companies that build the cask, Holtech is one of them.
Right, and they built the former ones.
Right, so the ones that are on the property now were built by Holtech.
Right.
So what's happening with Holtech in East New Mexico? They're looking to get approval from the NRC, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues. You know, it's, I believe, Indian property, it's on a oil reserve, it's blah, 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 blah. But what they want to do is to buy that property and they're, like I said, they're looking to get the approvals from the NRC so that they could ship from the different places, such as Indian Point, ship it out there until a final repository. There's a final repository. I don't know.
Ship it out there how? I mean, even how, like in what?
Well, there's a report, there's, it would come out of that canister and go into another canister, but there's a special report that was done in two thousand one, two thousand and two. If and when that comes out of there, one of the thoughts were that it would go by barge underneath the bridge, the Tappan Zee Bridge. Thank you.
That part is, it's just curious, what kind of a vessel?
Yeah, it would go into a different vessel and then it would go to Newark and then it would be railroaded. That was one, one report that was done. So that's gonna be a whole nother issue to get it out of there. That's not a, that's gonna be a whole nother thing.
I understand too that the casks don't have that long of a lifespan, maybe a hundred years?
Yes.
A hundred years is not a very long time. I've lived for a long time.
That's something, yeah, yeah, that's something the nuclear industry really has to look at.
That's gonna be a lifetime for a? That's going to be a lifetime for a lot of people in the future.
Yes. It's unfortunate what happened with the industry. It's going to sit there until there's a place for it to go.
Can I add one thing? The, I think it's important to know that Riverkeeper's solution to this is to keep the fuel on the site.
Well, and it may be in a more secure, and more securely than on these casks, I don't know. And maybe it's going to be on the site anyway.
No, that's what they want, they wanted to keep it there, and for our community, we want to get it off, because that property is useless with it on.
Well, I understand that, but if you're not going to get it, if it's not going to go off, then it should be kept more securely than in these casks. I just think it's-
I think everybody's in agreement about this.
Are there any experts, is there anyone that knows exactly?
At one of the-
I commend that you went down to, was it North or South Carolina?
Yeah, there was, the industry is changing, but there is, one of the things, and I think I mentioned at the last meeting, they're talking about going to a subsurface. I don't know if you've heard anything about this, Wendy. So putting it into canisters, going down, I forget how many feet, into a subsurface because they feel that it's safer there, and they would store it underneath the ground. Absolutely not. It can be retrieved, don't even think about it. Like, that's ridiculous, because a lot of, some of the environmentalists want to quote-unquote, as they do in Germany, entomb it. If it gets entombed, it's staying there permanently. So there's a lot of things going on with this, and one of the, one of my Citizens Advisory panels will address that next year, and we will have experts from both sides of the aisle discussing it, and what's on there.
I feel like that is the most critical-
It's important.
Problem that we're going to have with the closing of Indian Point, even more than taxes, even more than, I don't even know when we're going to be able to use that property even.
The NRC has been much better.
We don't own it yet. Stephanie said, we don't own the property anyway.
Yeah, right.
Even the property adjoining it, we don't own it.
But the NRC has gotten much better. At one time, when a property would go through decommissioning, they would not free any of the other parcels that could be reused, but the NRC has gotten a little more lax in letting certain parcels go. So the report that's due, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that post-shutdown decommissioning activities report should come out, and that will be their roadmap, that will be Holtech's roadmap of how it's going to be decommissioned, the property that's going to be, need to be used, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Is the NRC really all that involved? Are they really finding a place to put this? Are they, it's really ultimately their reason?
That's not, that's not their job.
That's not their job.
That's not their job. It's the Department of Energy. The Department of Energy made an agreement, well, who knows with that, you know, really, it's over 30 years.
I don't know. We're all very hypothetical too. How many people even come to a meeting? How many people come, and yet, we're going to be stuck with all this.
It's over 30 years now that, I remember in the 90s, when I was on the board in the 90s, there was a big talk about Yucca Mountain. I went down at the time, I forget who the Congresswoman was, Sue Kelly, went down there, there was a big forum on that, and this is like, you know, they haven't resolved it in 30 years, and I'm just like, people are expecting it's going to happen like overnight, but they just, you know, even if they found a place at this point, now we talk about, okay, so now how are we going to transport it? How is that going to happen? Is it going to go by truck? Is it going to go by barge? Is it going to go by railroad? That's a whole nother Pandora box.
So therefore, if it is going to be in our community, and if it is going to be kept over there, it has to be in something extremely secure.
It has to make sure, oh, sure, absolutely. Yeah, no, definitely. And then we're working with, I'm part of a group, and I've mentioned this before, it's a national group, and what we're looking to do, if in fact, we want it off the property, we want it gone. But if we're stuck with it, we're, you know, we're a storage facility, so then we should be, the community should be compensated. So Sue, not Sue Kelly, keep saying Sue Kelly, but Nita Loewy has been very good with that. She's on the forefront of that, and new legislation just got introduced last week about that. So I might need the community's support when the time comes, and we need to, we need to, because not every community in the country has a nuclear power plant, not every, not every community faces these problems. So the new legislation, the Stranded Act, it was reintroduced, so we're going to be, we're going to be pushing for that, because, yeah, we should not be a de facto storage facility. That's not fair to us. So that's the Department of Energy, they were supposed to take care of all that stuff, so you know what? That's their obligation, they need to fulfill it. But thank you for asking those questions. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right. Thanks, everyone, and have a great, oh, 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 Eileen, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh. I could never forget you.
No. Eileen Abcider, 138 Tate Avenue. Dwayne, you said noon time, but what day is that?
The 7th.
Oh, on the 7th also?
Yeah, the middle school in Peak Skill.
Okay, thank you. I just have a question about the brine versus salt. What is the difference in cost?
I think it's really the setup for the equipment. I think, wheels, if I'm not mistaken, isn't the brine, isn't it cheaper, because the brine is really like saltwater, almost?
Well, it's usually to have the salt anyway, because you need to have a storage container for this.
It's liquid.
You have to mix it. There's different ways of having, there's different types of brine.
Do we brine here?
No.
Okay, so does that make it cheaper, or does it just, does it make it cheaper? Because it really does a horrible job on your car.
The brine or the salt?
The brine.
Oh.
Because it's like rainwater that splashes up, brake lines, brake, all kinds of things inside your car-
Corrodes everything.
Are very, very badly affected by that brine. So I was just curious as to, I know it's the going thing to do, everybody's doing it, but nobody's talking about the ramifications on the residents who have to drive on this. I don't know if Peak Skill, did they use brine also, or any of your?
Peak Skill did not use it. City Ride looked into it, the city engineer decided that is, in their mind, it was a waste of money to do it, so they never used it either.
Okay. I just didn't know how determined-
And we don't use it.
I think the state uses it.
The state does.
In upstate New York, I've heard different places that use it, so.
But isn't the salt really just, just as bad, isn't it? When it mixes with all the slush, and that gets all kicked up underneath your car too, doesn't it?
I don't know, but the brine seems to be a topic of discussion in regards to repairs. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I wasn't sure if it was more cost-effective or if it was equal, or whatever the case might be, or how, how was even determined that we were going to use the brine?
We didn't, yeah.
Brine is used just as an initial phase of the storm. Put it down in the beginning to keep the snow nice and sticky to the road.
You know, Krone does that.
Then you're, you're still using salt.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So I don't think that's something we're going to be doing, because the setup, I'm sure, for the equipment and everything.
You don't use brine here?
We don't use it.
We have at least a 3,000 gallon tank somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
We could put, in your yard, no?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
What am I compensated for?
Oh, you'll be compensated well.
Secondly, the second heat of the deer season is going into effect in the next two weeks, so be aware that the first heat is almost over. I say this lightly, but I'm telling you, the number of deer accidents without the year end right now has surpassed last year's full year's accidents, so it is very important.
Sounds like we're infested with deer.
I have many, seven bucks and 11 does.
Wow.
They're going to have many more in the spring.
Yes, we are. So the second one will come in probably within the next week and a half to two weeks, if I'm not mistaken.
Wow.
So just be careful, don't want to dusk, and if there's one, there's more than one. So just slow it down.
Thank you for reminding us. Thank you, Eileen. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of quick things to update the public and the village board. I don't know if everybody knew the discussion, we were looking at replacing the boiler, the boiler here in Village Hall with a replacement oil burner. I'm looking at the possibility of switching it to gas, want to see if they've been in the discussion about that. It decided not to go in that direction, but I think it's a lot more efficient. Check with ConEdison, we could connect on if we wished to. So before I start going in that path, I want to make sure that that's okay with the village board to go in that direction.
Well, I think a cost analysis either way is the way to go.
Right, okay. So I want to make sure you guys knew that. And also want to listen to our most recent report for the sewage treatment plant, we're at 98% efficiency. Anything above 80% is good, we're at 98%.